I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for September 9th, 2025 at 6:32 PM. Attendance roll call.
Alder Person's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Bryce.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Alder Person Dolgie is absent. Alder Person Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, September 5th, 2025.
Thank you. New business. Presentation on health insurance options. So, just as we're coming up the setup, we discussed some options last meeting. That meeting discussed a lot about possible self-insurance. Sandy will address what our thought is on that, but in addition to that, we had asked for some different options to be brought forward and impacts that would have on premiums if we made some modifications to what we offer for health insurance as far as the makeup of the plan. So Sandy's going to go over those, and I believe you each got a handout for all of that. If not, it's coming out right now. Okay. Oh, thank you.
Okay, good evening. So again, my name is Sandy Motts. I'm with Kattingham and Butler. And last time I was here, as the mayor said, we talked about options moving forward. And we kind of laid out three options. Kind of stay the course with GHD, the fully insured plan, look at self-funding. I'll wait till maybe Kate gets this.
Wait till she gets it up on screen.
Yeah, I think there's a button that Carrie has to push.
It should be up there.
I was looking at you, Barb.
Well, the screens aren't turning on. All right. Thank you. No?
No, because we turned it off, so I had to return it back on.
Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
Okay. So when I was here last time, we talked about a few alternatives for a path forward with your medical plan. One was staying the course where you are now with fully insured with GHD. One was looking at the state ETF plan, and one was looking at self-insurance. We spent the majority of the meeting last time talking about self-funding, kind of introducing the council to what it is, why you might consider that as a path forward. So as consultants, we are a strong supporter of when you can buy less insurance, you should buy less insurance when it makes sense for you. And we talked about some of the benefits to the city to maybe like sharing the clinic with the school district and a number of those things. As we've learned a little bit more about some of the things that are going on with your plan, we think now is not the right time for the city to entertain self-funding. So one of the things that you have to do when you're self-funded in order for that program to be successful is you have to carve out some expensive medications. For example, you make some plan design changes. And some of those may impact members, and if we don't have a good solid alternative for those members, we wouldn't want to make those changes. So self-funding right now for us, the stop-loss market would not be competitive for you based on some of the high-cost claimants that you have on your plan. So that kind of left us back to where are we today? So to review, this is where you are at for your plan today. It's what your premium is, how many people you have enrolled in, single, employee, plus one in family, and what your total spend is. So you are spending right now net cost per employee per year of $27,550. Your renewal, so if we go to the next slide here, your renewal, based on kind of the activity on your plan, you are looking at that renewal would be about an 8.5% budget impact for you for next year, which comes at a cost of almost $219,000. So you're like most municipalities, you don't just have $219,000 that you can easily fit into your budget. So what I've been talking to the mayor and Kate about are if we stay the course fully insured with GHD, how can we bring that number down to help you find a way to fit this in your budget for 2026? So we looked at some strategies. We went to the carrier and said, what if the city adjusted their base plan deductible? So currently you have a $3,000, $6,000 deductible. That is not what the employee pays. So you'll see on the chart below, you have a $3,000, $6,000 deductible, of which the city then provides HRA funding to offset that deductible. So the employee ultimately only sees a $250 single or $500 family deductible. Okay? So we said to the insurance member, if you buy a higher deductible, that means the carrier is going to pay less frequently than if you have a lower deductible, so you can save on premium. So we said to the carrier, what if the city went to a $5,000, $10,000 deductible, but increased the amount of that HRA funding so at the end of the day, there would be no impact to employees here. Employees would still only have a $250, $500 deductible. So at the top, that's what I refer to as option one. That would bring the impact to your budget down from the $219,000 to about $174,000. And then the second option would be if we went to a $7,000, $14,000 and increased the HRA funding again, so there was no impact to employees, what would that do? You can see option two is actually a little bit higher cost than option one, and that's because the carrier isn't giving us much credit to go from that $5,000, $10,000 to $7,014. And the reason they're not giving you as much credit is because most employees are not hitting that level of deductible, so it's really minimal impact for them to increase the deductible more than that $5,000. So option one would be something that the city could do that would not impact employees at all and could give you about a $45,000 relief from your current renewal. Okay? Questions on that piece before I, or do you want me to go through the whole thing and come back?
Well, if you guys have questions as we're going, just ask them, but continue on.
Okay. So, on the next slide, the next thing we would look at is, well, what if employees were impacted? What if we made some plan design changes that would say employees maybe needed to pay a little bit more in terms of plan design? So we're not talking about employees paying more for their share of premium and changing that percentage. We're talking about what if we made plan design changes? So for example, the current employee-facing deductible is $250 a single, $500 deductible for a family. You could increase that deductible by $250 for a single and $500 for a family, making the deductible $500,000, and then increasing the out-of-pocket max to $1,000, $2,000. So you're just shifting everything up by $250, $500 for a family and making no other changes to the plan. You then would also reduce the amount of your HRA funding by that $250, $500 so that the employees are picking up that, and that would provide you $28,000 in savings in your HRA. So when you fund for the HRA, I'm going to use a simple example. If I have a $250 deductible and you give me $200 HRA funding, I ultimately am only responsible for $50 because the city's funding the other $200. If I never went to the doctor and I don't spend any money, the city keeps the $200 HRA funding that they, that they offer to me. It's there for me to use to offset my deductible if I need it, but if I don't need it and don't use it, it's the city's. So the city currently with your HRA strategy, your average utilization of the amount that you actually fund is around about 32% to 37%. The rest of that money then, the city is saving by using that strategy to offset deductibles for employees when they need it, and when they don't, the city retains that. So for purposes of all of my estimating on your HRA funding today, I used 40%. I overestimated your utilization because I wanted to be conservative with the numbers for you. So as the employee becomes responsible and you decrease your funding, the utilization actually goes down. Because if my deductible's $250 and I don't normally go to the doctor, if you increase my deductible to $500 and you increase the associated HRA funding to go with that, if I didn't use it at $250, I'm not using it at $500. So my overall utilization percentage is going to go down for the city. So as you fund more, the utilization goes from 40 down to probably 30, down to about 25. Okay? So on the second strategy is you could go from, instead of increasing it to $250, $500, you could increase it $500,000, bringing the employee deductible to $750, $1,500. And again, increasing also the associated max out-of-pockets for the employee as well. I can tell you that $250, $500 is a very low deductible. We did talk about this, I think, last time. It is lower than most benchmarks. I have very few public sector clients that offer that low of a deductible. So you know, at some point, maybe having employees pay a little bit more when they utilize the plan is a strategy that you could employ as well. So on this page, this also shows you, if you went up to $250, $500, about another $28,000, you could reduce your renewal. If you went $500,000, increase in deductible, you would save approximately $53,000 in HRA spend. So on the next slide, I'm going to kind of recap a bunch of things together. So the very first item on here is if you made those base plan adjustments that have no impact to the employees here at all, you would reduce your renewal by almost $45,000. If you made some deductible changes in which employees would pay more when they use the plan, you could further reduce that renewal by either $28,000 or $53,000, depending how much you want to increase the deductible. Another option would be to change your co-pays. So you have very low co-pays on your plan currently as well. So if an employee goes for an office visit, say for a sinus infection, and they go to the doctor, they pay a $15 co-pay, they don't have to meet their deductible. If they go to a specialist, they pay a $30 co-pay, and they don't have to meet their deductible. And then they have a $10 urgent care deductible currently. And then your prescription co-pays are a generic $10, preferred 25, non-preferred 55, and specialty medications are 55 for retail co-pays. So another option would be to increase the co-pays to an office visit $30, a specialist visit 60, urgent care 50. So from 10 to 50, if someone chose to use urgent care. And then increase the RX co-pays. Leave the generic co-pay alone because you want people to get the generic prescriptions. Those are the least expensive. But consider changing the preferred from 25 to 40, non-preferred from 55 to 80. And then because the specialty medications are very, very expensive medications, the co-pay would be 25% up to a max of $250 for that co-pay. That strategy with changing the co-pays would result in about a $90,000 reduction in your renewal as well. Then I have on here an opt-out strategy. So you currently have a cash-in-loose strategy. So you give employees money if they waive your insurance and go on a spouse's plan or a parent's plan. If they're under 26, they are eligible for a cash payment instead of taking your insurance. We have proposed a different type of opt-out strategy that could be appealing to members who have high-cost medical claims for the city. And so what I love about this strategy is it's a win-win. It helps the city save money, but it's also a benefit to employees. So I'm going to use Kate as an example. Let's say Kate is on Ms. Geagle's plan with her spouse and two children. The city pays a family plan for Kate. And if we say to Kate, Kate, if you leave the city's plan and go on your spouse's plan, we're going to give you a $100 per member per month payroll bonus, taxable payroll bonus. So for her family of four, $400 a month that she can use to offset the cost of her spouse's plan, and the city is going to reimburse her for any deductible out-of-pocket expenses that she would incur under the spouse's plan. So in essence, Kate and her family gets a zero out-of-pocket deductible co-pay plan through the spouse. You'd say, well, why would the city do that? So the city currently spends about $35,000, $36,000 for a family plan for Kate to have coverage here. The max ACA limit in 2026 for a family is $21,200, plus $400 a month, times 12 is $4,800. Combined, that's $26,000. So even if Kate and her whole family had a bad year and had expensive claims under the employer's plan, you would reimburse all of that, and the most the city would pay for Kate's family of four is $26,000 versus the $36,000 you're paying today in premium. And that's at today's rate, not with the renewal increase attached to it. Now, the likelihood that Kate and her whole family is going to hit that is small, because generally speaking, if someone in the family is sick, it's one high-cost claimant in the family, not every member of the family, which would then bring that limit down even further. But it's a strategy that helps Kate pay expensive medical bills. She doesn't have to worry about those bills, but it also saves the city money. It also, if Kate's a high-cost claimant on your plan, her or one of her family members, let's say they're going through cancer, or she had a premature baby or something that's very costly to the plan, that's going to impact your renewal for the next year. If Kate leaves your plan, she takes that risk with her to the spouse's plan, and that then helps the city maintain lower renewals here. So it's a win-win strategy that if you were to put that in place, if you had seven families leave your plan to go to a spouse's plan, could further reduce your spend by $94,000.
Is there, there's a cap on that then, as far as how much money we would spend out?
Correct. Because the ACA, the Affordable Care Act, has a limit of what an employer can charge an individual or a family that they have to pay out of pocket. For 2026, that single limit is $10,600, and for a family, it's $21,200. Okay?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, just looking at this, it looks like we could employ all, or none, or one, or some of these strategies. We can...
Correct. I'm trying to show them to you kind of à la carte, because you probably don't want to do all of these things all at once. But you also have to fill a void for your budget, right? There's a certain amount that you can afford to fit into your budget for next year, and you have to determine where that amount is. So I'm kind of trying to give you options so that you can kind of say, well, maybe we want to do a strategy one and three this year, and maybe we hold some of these other strategies for another year.
What's the spousal surcharge and FAHP?
Yep. So another strategy that you could do individually is a spousal surcharge. It's where you tell a spouse, if yours, I would say to Kate, if your spouse has coverage someplace else, and they have available health insurance coverage through their employer, and they choose to enroll on Ms. Geagle's plan, Kate's going to pay an extra $100 on top of her family premium to have her spouse on the city's plan. Okay? Many private sector employers do that already, which sort of pushes some of those spouses to the municipality's plan. If you employed that strategy alone, we estimate that you would take an additional $32,000 from employees for that spousal surcharge. If you deployed both strategies together, the spousal surcharge and the FAHP, we anticipate you would have more employees take the Family Advantage Health Plan to avoid paying the spousal surcharge. So that together would give you a combined savings of about $190,000 if you did them both. You don't have to do them both. You can do one. You could do Family Advantage without the spousal surcharge this year, or you could do them both together. It's just why those two, if you add up the spousal surcharge and the opt-out strategy, it's less than if you put them in together.
Can you incorporate the opt-out? People can opt out, and if they, we can say, yeah, you can opt out. We'll pay the $100 per member a month, and we'll pay your deductible at the other insurance. Can you also do the other, the flip? And can we employ all these things, is what I'm saying. If they decide to go on our insurance, if your husband is allowed insurance at his other, at his company, and you're choosing to take it with us, we can also still charge those families $100. So...
You could charge them $100 more. You could charge them $200 more, I think.
Oh, what, okay. So now that you said that, that was going to be my next question, is where are you coming up with these numbers? Are you comparing to other municipalities or private sector? Where are, are these low numbers? Are these average?
I would say that for Wisconsin municipalities, that employer surcharge $100 a month is the amount that they would typically charge. Private sector does what's called a spousal carve-out in some cases. You could do that. Our recommendation as a consultant is we do think that that is not legal under Wisconsin statute. It has never been challenged. But what private sector will say to you is if your spouse has coverage someplace else, they cannot be on our plan. So that is another strategy. I do have some municipalities that do that, but we do caution that we do think that that is not in compliance with the statute. Okay, questions on that, or any of kind of these strategies that... Okay, Kate, on the next slide. On the next slide, I kind of summarize it all together. Again, renewing as you are with GHT, without making any of the changes to the base plan or that would impact employees, you're looking at almost a $219,000 add to your budget for 2026. And then I just list what are the possible deductions that you could employ to bring that down. Is your target $100,000, $50,000? Where are you? That's really a question for the city as to where do you need to be to put this in your budget. Okay?
I got a question here, real quick. So these numbers on page six, that is not a cumulative total. That is, the savings was with each plan, correct?
Correct. Yep. So for example, like strategy two and three on here, increasing the deductibles, you're going to do one or the other. You're going to increase the deductibles to $250,500 or $500,000. So if you only go to $250,500, that's worth about $28,000. If you go to $500,000, that's worth about $53,000. Those are not two that you're going to combine. Okay?
So on page three, we'll go back, current, that 2, 2,700,000 there, that is what we're paying this year, or is that for next year?
Correct. That's for 2025, what we're paying currently.
So it'll be an 8.5% above that.
So that will be at the 2.973527 next year, based on the renewal rate.
Okay. And that's, and then we would take a look at, say if we just did the add both on the bottom, be $190,000, we would just take $200,000 off of that.
Correct.
Okay. So each item on the back page is à la carte to take off of that roughly $3,000.
Correct. That's why, if you look at that last page, that 218,943 is the difference between what we're paying this year to what we're quoted next year, if we leave everything the same. Then, like, like she had said, Sandy had said, as we, if you pick any of these other ones, like increase the base plan, HRA funding, you would subtract roughly $45,000 off that 218. And that would be the, so you could pick...
So ideally, we, we want to come in at 2.7 at the most, I would say, because that's where we're currently at. We really don't want to go up. So we have to take a look at reducing it somehow to, at least to get that number. I mean, is that the plan? Is that, was that the strategy?
Well, the strategy is to show you guys options on ways that we could tailor the plan to decrease costs without...
Sacrifices.
With having minimal disruption to the employees. Now, there's some of these things on here that I wouldn't necessarily recommend doing them all this year. Maybe save those for, for future years, because I think they would have some disruption. But they're, they're all there for you. We brought forward the options that we thought were the most valid.
But what are we budgeted at in our plan?
We're budgeted right now, while we're still, Jenny and I are still working through the operating, but right now, we're budgeting for the 218,493 as if you didn't do anything. But there's other holes in the budget at that point, so...
No, you're budgeting for the 2973? Is that what you're budgeting?
We're budgeting for the 8.5% increase in healthcare right now.
So it would be 2973?
Correct.
Okay. So that, that's just, I just want to get an idea where we're at, so...
Correct.
Okay.
Alderman Hamel.
So, just so I understand, the 218 is going up as is doing nothing?
Doing nothing. Correct.
What mine, if we do the last one, which is $190,000, that's off the 218?
Correct.
Okay. Or off the 29?
No, that's off the current. So...
Off the current. So we're three...
It's off the cur...
It's off the current. So the savings would reduce from current to 173. So instead of 218, if you adopted option one, you move to a $5,000, $10,000 deductible, the 173,978 is how much it would go up from your current. On the last one, 181 is how much it would go up from current. The last option wouldn't make sense to do because you're not getting enough credit for that increase in deductible. But that six point, so you go from an 8.5% increase to a 6.6?
We're talking the last page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the last one, I'm correct on that. That if you, if you just did that last option of both the Family Advantage Healthcare and the spousal supply, you would save $190,000 off of that 218.
So we're still going up. We're increasing by 28,943.
Twenty-eight thousand, yeah, roughly.
Correct. But also remember, Family Advantage is assuming seven people leave your plan.
Correct. Yes.
Where like the change in deductibles, the change in co-pays, and the change in base plan, those are reductions that the carrier is going to give you off of the renewal that are for sure going to come down. So the 190 is a little bit dependent upon...
That's an estimate.
Yeah. Yep.
But that could be the biggest bang for the buck.
Alderman Schrader.
I have a question about the, the co-pays. Is that the only real option, is just doubling them?
No, you could certainly, we would see typical co-pay being 2550 or 3060 is what we would see typically for that co-pay visit. Urgent care, we actually see probably closer to $100 or subject to deductible coinsurance. So what you want employees to do right is seek care at the lowest possible place they can. So the best option would be first a tele-visit. If tele-visit isn't available for them and they can't do like a virtual visit, then the next least expensive option for them would be to go to their primary care physician. If they can't get into the primary care physician, then it may be urgent care, and in some cases, then emergency room, right? So having employees kind of think through that. At a $10 co-pay, it's pretty easy to run to urgent care, where if I have to pay $100, I might think, do I really need to go to urgent care, or can I wait till Monday, or can I wait till tomorrow to try and get to my doctor? And so it makes employees maybe reevaluate a little bit some of the choices before they, they go in. And of course, each one of those has an increased cost to the plan if employees use the ER or the urgent care versus the other options.
The other question I have is, again, we'll go back to page three. Currently, employees are at 2,500,000. Renewal would be 300,000 more put on the employees, right? They would have to pay a higher premium? Is that what I'm reading?
Well, they pay, the employees pay 12% of the premium. So if the premium goes up, yes, they would pay, their 12% would be a big, 12% of a bigger number is a bigger number.
Right.
Okay. So then, so then if we got this 856667 on page two, in the big highlighted boxes, is the increase of insurance costs also the increase to employers, I mean, to the employees? They would pay 6% more, 7% or 8.5% more, right?
No. So you can see, there's an employee contribution line in those boxes at the top. Currently, you're taking from employees based on their 12% contribution. Employees are contributing about $314,279, which brings your net spend down to the, just under 2.6 million. On the renewing as-is, you'll see the employee contributions go from 314 to 344. Because your plan is going to go up by 8.5%, they're going to pay 12% on a higher amount. They're still only paying 12%. So you're picking up about $30,000 more in employee contributions based on that. We haven't proposed to the city, we haven't talked about going from 12 to 13%. We haven't proposed to the city, we haven't talked about going from 12 to 13% or increasing that premium amount. Our focus has been on maybe aligning the plan design closer to benchmark.
When you, when you say closer to benchmark, can you just elaborate on that?
Yeah, so when we, we do a process when we meet with the city and we talk a little bit about where do you fall in line in comparison? Where is there opportunity for you on your plan? And we look at things like your participation rate. How many employees that are eligible for the plan take the plan and how does that compare with other municipalities? We look at what your cost is, we look at what is the employer-employee split of the premium? What is the employer-employee split when employees seek services? So how much of the bill does the city pay and how much does the employee pay? And so we give that data and we look at that data compared to other Wisconsin public sector benchmarks in which the, the city is competing for talent because you, you still wanna have a competitive plan. Your plan is probably right in line with benchmark in terms of what employees pay in premium. Your plan is much more generous in terms of plan design than other Wisconsin public sector. So rather than ask employees to pay more, changing the plan design only has employees pay more when they seek services.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
When do we have to make some type of decision?
I would recommend probably not next meeting, the following meeting, we would have a discussion on that because we won't be at the next one most likely, so why don't we do it when everyone's here?
On October 14th then.
Is that the first meeting?
Yeah.
Sounds right.
Yeah, it's the first, yeah, it's first, it's first Tuesday.
The second.
Or second Tuesday, whatever.
And Sandy, are you accessible if we would have any other questions?
Absolutely.
Are we going to give some suggestions to get some things on paper that people can see or we're just gonna look at this ourselves and?
Well, we'll have discussions on it. And we can, and we can have discussions tonight yet. I'm not cutting off discussion on this by any means, so if you have specifics, but the, the last meeting, the op, the, the request was to bring forward options to the plan. Either if we're going self-insurance or not, either way, we could do these either way and present like an à la carte thing to you and that's what we're doing. So I guess we're just looking for your feedback on it. If you, if you're looking for a recommendation from my office, we can do that as well. What I would recommend we do, but if you guys want to do it yourselves, I'm okay with that too.
No, I'm just saying, because we, we really gotta have this by the end of October, is that what we talked about last time?
No, we need to have it before we, before you approve the final budget.
Okay, in November then, so. The time is getting punched here.
End of October.
That's only two meetings away.
Three, one, two, three meetings away.
Yeah.
Does open enrollment come into play on that?
No. No.
I, I have another question, I just, maybe this is for Jeff. If people are on council and potentially on the insurance, is that a conflict or anything as far as voting and talking about certain thing? I don't know, if, if you have it as a benefit, I'm just curious if.
Are you? Yes.
Yep, that's a possibility that that would be a conflict.
So what would you do in that predicament?
She would just abstain?
He would not vote. Yeah. That's a good point.
I don't, yeah.
Right, no, that's, that's a good point.
Well, and, and actually it came to my mind because Rick said recommendations, I'm just, I don't know, are you on it? I don't even know.
I am on it. I can't vote on it, I can only make recommendations.
Uh huh. Okay. Just curious. Okay, yeah. I was thinking, I was thinking of Rick.
We, we kinda already have the mayor's recommendations. I mean, that's how we're at this point already, so we're kinda there, we've been that way for years.
Well, I'll tell you, I don't recommend doing them all this year, all the options, so I'll go on record on that. What? Oh, yes. Well, chief's coming up, I do wanna just say one thing. We are in the people business and we get our work done through our people, so we, we have to be fair to the taxpayers, be good stewards to their money, but we also have to balance that with making this a competitive and a workplace that people wanna come to every day.
You're stealing my thunder, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't wanna give you all credit for saying that.
I've said this before and I want you to think about this, and Sandy, you're doing a really nice job explaining it, so thank you very much, but when you use terms like, you know, high-cost claimants, to me, those are people and those are people that work in this community and fight for you each and every day. You have a very difficult decision moving forward. Just understand this, I have a retention problem in the Meskego Police Department. Part of that is on me. But I need your help. And I need your help when you're talking about these things because the dollars and cents of this actually has meaning for people. And just remember, we're in the people business as well, just like the mayor said. I've said before and you've heard me say this before, it's a three-legged stool here in Meskego. Why do people move here? It's safe, which I'm gonna take credit for, and some of the people are working here behind me. We have a really great school system. We have some great public and private schools and quite frankly, we have some pretty low taxes. And it's a stool and if it gets unbalanced in a different way, we're gonna have significant problems. If I have a retention problem, part of this, you know, we use words like benchmark on other things, well, then it needs to be benchmark across the board. And that comes from pay and benefits in a package. Give me the tools to be successful and be one of the safest communities here for the city of Meskego moving forward. Understanding you guys have huge decisions to make, budgets suck, but I'm telling you, when you look at the numbers, you, you can see here this evening with my swearing in and some of the other things, we, we have families that care about this community and you have to make those tough decisions. Yes, it is my recommendation, you gotta take a look at, if you wanna hear mine, it's option one, and then start looking at the opt-out plan of like, okay, can we get some buy-in and sell some, you know, like some of that because that sounds interesting to me. I take the buyout. Okay, I'd be very interested in taking my wife's insurance and looking at some other things. But doubling deductible or copays and, you know, insurance at this point, it's just really bad timing for the Meskego Police Department. Thank you for your time. Hopefully I didn't overstep. Thank you.
Chief, I'm married to a sheriff, so I totally understand.
Questions, comments, direction? You just wanna stew on it, come back in two meetings and have a more robust discussion? Where do you wanna go?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I, I could make my recommendations right now too, but I feel like Tom's not here and I feel like he should have some input in this, I mean.
Part of why, I, I did talk to him and let him know that, you know, we're gonna get him everything here. He's, obviously he's planning on watching the meeting in the morning and he, you know, we said, I don't plan on taking action tonight, that doesn't mean one of you guys couldn't motion and go that direction, but I, I think we should have everyone here for that.
I, I would think for sake, in the next meeting, if you have some ideas, we should have them on the table right now so that we're not walking in with the same sheet of paper next, next time and, and not seeing real numbers.
Well, you're, you're gonna have the same sheet of paper next time. These are the options that we're bringing.
I know, but if we put these options on here, it'll be in black and white and we can put them on a screen for everybody to see if we, we have some ideas. Yeah, but, but if you look at page three, it'll change that.
What would change? I guess I'm wondering what you're.
Well, say, say just for sake, we take the 190,000 off of page six, what is that gonna do to option one dollars? I mean, we, it, it's not telling us, is that 190,000?
Yeah, no, so, okay.
So we, we'd gain $20,000?
No, if, so if you pick that last option on page six, so actually, page six kinda has every, all the numbers there. So we're starting right now without doing anything at $219,000 more than what we're paying this year.
Right.
For any one of these options that you pick, you would subtract the dollar amount from that 218.
Right.
Wait.
219, yes. Yes.
Sorry, I, I'm under the impression that some of this is hypothetical.
Correct.
Like the 190,000, the last one, like these are hypothetical numbers.
It is, but that's the numbers we're gonna use for our budget, just like all budgets are hypotheticals.
Right.
So that's what we would plug into our budget, yes.
Okay, but are, so with that said, are some of these things, I'm a firm believer that with anything in life, inch by inch is a cinch, yard by yard is hard. And we all know this is a Cadillac plan, we all know it's gonna have to change. I am not a proponent of ripping it all out, ripping off the Band-Aid right now, but inch by inch, we're gonna have to all make some changes. Because we're spending other people's money and we wanna, and we want good talent, we want the best of every world. But on these, what do you see, Sandy, that are the, the most realistic numbers that we can really realistically see the savings and not as hypothetical?
Really, I think all of the top ones, the last three, the family advantage, the spousal surcharge and combining those, those are really subject to how many people you get, how many spouses have access to other insurance. Those other numbers are pretty comfortable numbers. Those are decrements that the carrier gave us to say if you increase the deductible, if you increase the copays, this is how much relief you will get on your renewal. So really, the only ones that are really sort of hypothetical numbers would be those last ones because it really depends upon how many people actually have a working spouse that would have to pay and how many people might engage with that family advantage health plan.
So increasing the deductible and increasing the copays are the solid things and we could incorporate one or the other of the things on the bottom potentially or whatever, but okay, that's what I wanted to know. I think that's where we need to narrow in here, our focus on if we have a 218, $219,000 that we need to come up with on our budget, which is tight. You know, when we talk about things like wanting more police officers and wanting more of this and, and that, we need to get serious and we're gonna have to do some of these harder things on the top.
And if you take those top four numbers, that's $163,000. I mean, if we're just talking numbers now.
No, you can't have both. You can only have one or the other. You can only have one or.
Options, options two and three is one or the other.
Okay, so you can take 50,000, so it'd be 113, 110,000 if you take the higher deductible, just say, or if you don't, then it's another 28,000 savings on top of that, so it'll be 140,000.
So for simplicity, that first number, that 45, 44, 965, I think that's a no-brainer. I think we do that one. I mean, that, that has no impact to the employees.
Whenever you're done. I just wanna be next.
Yeah, but if you're gonna abstain, you can't be part of discussions either.
You're giving opinions, I can give my opinion. He's not voting.
I'm not voting.
I'm not voting either.
Yeah, you really can't. It just, that's, if you abstain, you abstain.
It's a mayor's proposed budget.
Oh, it's legal.
If you're on it, when they, when you're going through all this, you're on it. You'd have to be on it. Meaning you'd have to be off.
Conflict of interest, I don't, I don't know.
But you can't convince any of these people, you can't really talk to convince any of these people. Well, in private, it would be much not in front of us.
Can I?
We're gonna be, we're gonna be talking about this in two weeks, so you could share that and then.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Jeff, for clarity, I don't necessarily, I, I don't know if it's true, can she not speak? I just would say, think she couldn't vote.
Typically, when you abstain, you're supposed to abstain.
Okay, okay, that's, I just, I needed clarity on that. I see what, okay.
But I guess the clarity would be, did she abstain or does she have to abstain?
Well, that's her, she, she decides if she's abstaining, there's no.
I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I'm just, I just wanna make that clear. Is she abstaining?
It's, it's her choice.
Yeah. We can't tell her to abstain.
Yeah, I can't.
But, but it could be, come back to bite you by a conflict of interest, so, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, Jeff, you are, so.
In the end, it's her choice, right?
I, I know people have abstained in the past for things, so it's not singling you out. People have done that.
I'd prefer to have a talk with you outside of today. And this is gonna come up again for council, so you're not losing anything. I'm sorry. So I'd prefer that, to have a discussion with you outside of council. Okay.
Don't ever tell my husband that.
He'd be here? Oh, yeah.
It's tough to be an Alderman.
So, so going where I was, the 45,000, I think is a no-brainer because it has no, it, it saves us money, has no impact to the employees. So I, I would start with that and then tack on any of these other ones that you're interested in and go from there. But I think you have the options in front of you right now. I think my recommendation is to sit, stew on this, ask questions, I mean, if you have questions here today, ask them, otherwise we can reach out to Sandy as you have them. And then we come back in two meetings and we're, we should be pretty well-prepared for, you know, robust discussion and you guys can decide the direction you wanna go.
Well, I think we had a discussion, I, I, what, I think we, we can kinda put a direction together tonight and then we can finalize it in, in a couple of weeks. I, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but everything's in front of us, nothing's gonna change in front of us in two weeks, other than us.
Two meetings, not two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other, other than us going back over this again, which we have in front of us. I mean, if we, maybe we could have had this in front of us sooner than tonight.
I mean, it's.
We were still making changes this afternoon, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I just, maybe, I don't.
What are the elements that got us to the 173, 978?
173, but where, where's the 173, 978?
Page two, three?
Oh.
6.6%.
That is the changing of the, which one is?
Utilization, HRI, HRE.
Oh, that's the, yeah, that's the 40, that's the line number one on here, the 45,000.
This line number one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just say something real quick?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think we need to remember that this is a total compensation package, so these were presented with the intent of being a part of the budget conversation and I think it makes sense to couple those conversations as it's a total benefits package. So I think that's why the options were thrown out there tonight. If you have questions about the nuances of the different options, that would be, you know, a good time to ask that. Just something to keep in mind moving forward.
So I'm just looking at all, I mean, if I, if I add it up, we do what Rick's saying, the 45,000 right off the top there, then just increase the deductible, the smaller one, for start, you know, just like I said, inch by inch, you know, that's another 28,000 because the difference between 28 and 53, that's only $20,000 really difference in the whole scheme of things between those two huge deductible differences. And then to increasing the copays, that gets us at 163,000 right there. So we're still short of, you know, saving the whole 219. Then we would, you know, pick, pick or do both of the family advantage. I think the family advantage plan is a great idea, offering people some money every month to go possibly on their spouses. I don't know, you know, like you said, seven's your target for that?
Sandy, what's the risk of the, if any, of the family advantage health plan?
So if you don't save anything, you don't pay anything, right? So the whole family advantage is premised on you're going to save money. And like I said, what I really like about that strategy and regardless of what you do, I think you should consider adding that as an option because if employees don't like the increased copays, they don't like the increased deductible, then maybe they go to the spouse's plan and the family advantage takes care of them. They never have to worry about an unexpected medical bill, it's gonna cover their out-of-pocket, their deductible under that other plan. So I think family advantage is a nice way to soften, especially when an employer is making plan changes that are gonna impact the employee because it gives them another option to consider then. So the risk to family advantage really is, let's say you had a family of eight and you're giving them $100 a month, right? That's $800 a year times 12 plus what your max out-of-pocket liability would be. Now maybe it costs you a little bit more for that family than it would've cost you to have them on your plan, because it's the combination of that max out-of-pocket plus your payroll bonus in comparison with what you pay for a fully insured plan. I don't know how many families you have here that are more than, you know, four, five children. So you would pay more in payroll bonus, and in that case, you might pay slightly more than you would've paid. On the other hand, if that family is hitting their out-of-pocket limit for the ACA, it means they're unhealthy and it would've been a lot of risk on your plan, which would've also impacted your renewal. So it's really minimal risk for you. You aren't paying unless you save.
Well, and then, I know, I believe I asked this already, but is the $100, is that set in stone or is that just a number that is a fair number? Is that arbitrary?
It's a fair number that other municipalities that do something like this, I mean, as far as a surcharge?
Yeah.
It's a number that other municipalities have done.
Yeah. Okay. So that's the norm? It couldn't be 50 or 75?
It could be 50. Our standard is actually 50. But when we analyzed it for Muskego, you want that number to be attractive for an employee to take another employer's plan, right? So why wouldn't I take my spouse's plan? Because maybe my spouse's plan is like really expensive in terms of premium. And even if you give, if you only give me $200 for a family of four and I have to pay in addition to that 200, another 500 to be on my spouse's plan, it maybe doesn't entice me to go. So the number for us that worked out when we analyzed your plan and where you're at with your premium, what the average premium is for someone else, would be to incentivize people to go, you'd need to give at least 100 per member per month.
As long as we're talking about that, I got a quick question. On page six, spousal surcharge is $13,000 and on page five, it's 32,000 on the bottom.
It should be 32, and that is my apology. I did...
So the second from the bottom on page six, where it's 13, should be $32,000?
Correct.
Which makes a big difference as far as looking at pure numbers.
I just wanna caution you on the spousal surcharge. We do have some timing considerations. So if we implement this and there's a scenario where someone wants to go on their spouse's insurance, they may not be able to do that because their open enrollment window may have passed. So I just would kind of give that some thought before you just implement a spousal surcharge.
Let me ask you about the insurance. If there's a change in insurance on somebody else's policy, can you use that to go on somebody else's policy?
Yeah. Isn't that a significant change?
Yeah, that's a significant change.
Would allow them to...
The $100 surcharge would not be a qualifying event. It's not, if they lost coverage and they weren't covered under the plan anymore, that's a qualifying event that would allow them to go to the spouse's plan. But just because the premium went up and you implemented a spousal surcharge, that wouldn't qualify for a qualifying event.
Then I wanna catch 22, because next year, we'll be in the same predicament.
Well, we can announce it earlier.
So is there a possibility to do a two-tier system? Or do you have to do it all in the same calendar year?
You do not. You could put the family advantage, and that's why I showed them separately. You could put family advantage in place for 1-1 and let employees know that next year you are considering a $100 spousal surcharge. And so employees then would have time for their spouse's open enrollment that next year. Employees would know, oh, I might wanna consider my spouse's plan because I know next year, in addition to the premium I pay, I'm gonna have to pay another $100. I think that's what Kate is saying, is you wanna let employees know that maybe that's a strategy you're looking at for next year and you notify them of that now. So when they're going through their spouse's open enrollment, a good example is the school district. Most school districts, their open enrollment period is 7-1. So the district would already be through their open enrollment. So if you have any employees here that have spouses that work for the district, they've already completed their open enrollment.
Okay, but so what I asked is, you can't do a two-tier system where you, we can offer it during the year as well, so we can still get people in sooner on this or not? I mean, is this, when we put this together, it's just cut in stone for one year?
I'm not sure I'm following what your question is.
I'm not sure if it's a poll here.
So I guess the way to say it is that if we add spousal surcharge in and somebody, they come up, say, in, I don't know, what month are we in, September? They have to, we have, it has to go, we're going calendar year to calendar year. They can't come over beforehand.
Well, they would need to declare with their open enrollment period for us. If they're switching onto our plan, if they're going off, they have to declare during the open enrollment of whatever plan they're going in.
When is our open enrollment?
Typically, it's at the end of October, November timeframe.
Of all these things on here, I would caution you, the spousal surcharge is one that I would recommend waiting, not doing this year, but it's, because I think that's...
Well, we could vote on it and have it start as of next year. Have it start for next year if we're all in agreement on it, wouldn't have to start this year, correct? Am I correct on that?
You can.
Okay. So I did talk and I won't have a conflict of interest, and so I do actually wanna say some stuff. You know, working in healthcare, like, I do work with people's insurances every day. The city of Muskego does have a super low copay and co-insurance and medication plan compared to a lot of other ones. So upping some of the copays would actually, to like the standard, actually wouldn't be a horrible idea. But the office I work at, we're a specialty office, and most of the ones that come through for specialty office are like $75, $100. There's a few patients that have like max out-of-pocket deductibles of like $17,000. So the city of Muskego is well, well underneath of it. But also in looking at all the money that we plan to save in doing different things to the insurances, we also need to think, you know, helping with chief, is that some of these employees for the city, the police department, up at City Hall, they're all gonna want pay raises also. So the less, the more benefits we take away from them, the more we need to help compensate them. And I know that the next generation coming through, not your generation, well, the younger ones, they're mostly worried about, how much money am I gonna make and how much time do I get off work? Not all of them are worried about, and I'm not saying all of them, but most of them are not worried about, do I have a $0 copay? They don't go to the doctor that much. So if you say, all right, I'm going to the urgent care because I have strep throat and I didn't do my telehealth visit because I couldn't, you know, it's gonna cost me 50 bucks to go to urgent care, well, fine, I went to urgent care once this year, but when do I get off and how much do I get paid? So those are also things we have to think about, too.
Any more thoughts? If not, I'm going to say we should just come back in two meetings, have a further discussion at that point. We will have the operating budget by then, so you'll be able to see where we need to fill in holes, if we need to fill in holes at that point and by what amount. I'll probably make a recommendation in that budget that I'm bringing forward as a recommendation with what I think we should be doing with this. But obviously, you guys can, could and should, you know, do what you guys wanna do on that. But I will be making a recommendation through the budget process. And I think that's probably the best way where you look at it of where do we need to be to achieve our goals budgetarily? And that all fits together with this. Thank you. Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
Moving on, 2026 capital budgets, capital projects fund budgets. Who wants to go first? He put his hand up and I took it. He's only got a, you only have a, yeah. He's got one item. So page 50 in your book.
This is the only one I forgot to do last time, sorry. Old Town Hall repairs, page 50. So the front kind of stairs, when you go in, the landing area and the handrail, nothing's been touched since we moved the Old Town Hall there. And from a safety issue, we need to kind of redo those, we need to redo the stairs, the landing, and some of that masonry brickwork. I don't know if you guys look, it's kind of a tripping hazard over there. So those items all need to get together and get done, so.
So the stairs are wood?
Yeah. Yeah, but the masonry work is like the paving blocks, if you look at it, if you go over there, they're all uneven anymore and the stairs need to be rebuilt with wood and the handrails, so. We haven't touched it since we moved it, and I believe we moved it over in 2003. Is that correct? When the Old Town...
So the paving, it's not poured cement? I can't remember.
No, no, it's those individual bricks. Remember those individual bricks? I think we sold them or someone sold them.
They were like memorial bricks.
Yeah, memorial bricks that are over there. Some of them, we're gonna have to find out who has it. They're kind of worn down, too. So we gotta see, do we have to call someone up? Do we have to like get them involved again, you know? Do you wanna still do it? I mean, some of the names are all worn off of those as well.
I'm just wondering if we should do cement there and move the bricks off to the side as a little...
I'm sure we will look at a lot of ideas, which makes more sense that way or...
For the long term.
Yeah, for the long term, just use asphalt pretty much, and then you can do different memorial ways and like...
Just have a little path off to the side with the bricks or something?
Correct, or something like that. It makes more sense, so it's less maintenance for the future.
It's typical of those to do what you're describing. The one thing, I'm not sure what your books say, but they have, we had this in here as a geobouring. It's not, it would be landfill funds.
Wait a minute, say that again?
The funding source would be landfill on this one. I'm not sure what your books said.
You think it would be that much money to do all that? $40,000 bucks?
We have to do stairs, paving. I mean, again, if you move the bricks, you're probably gonna have to create some type of monument to do something with the bricks, asphalt, you know.
Questions? Objections? Everyone okay?
I don't have a question on that. I have a question, just, I wanna make a motion on something else.
Well, we're talking about this one right now.
Yeah.
Anything with this one?
Not with this one, no.
Okay.
Okay. But it is, I would like to make a motion that staff provides us bids with tearing down the PD.
We will be talking about that. It's coming back as a discussion.
Well, I know, but I wanna make a motion, if I could finish making my motion...
Okay.
To have bids, excuse me, quotes at the meeting on 10/14 for tearing down the PD. I mean, we've been asking for this for over a year. I wanna make a motion for this.
Is this coming up today? No.
It's on the...
I know, but it's not, I mean, we're, we're gonna be talking about it as an item, but caution, doing this before we have a full discussion.
Who's gonna be bringing this up?
Scott will be bringing it, but not today.
You're not doing it today?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess she's asking for...
I'm asking for quotes that we've been asking for for over a year.
When he brings it up, why can't he do it there?
When is he bringing it up? Because she's asking for a date.
Asking for...
The same meeting we're gonna be talking about, the healthcare.
Which will be?
Two meetings from now.
In October 14th?
Yes.
Yes.
14th, yes.
Second Tuesday or our first meeting in October?
Correct.
Which the pricing and all that is all part of that presentation.
Okay, so we have that then, Scott?
You have the quotes?
No, we don't have quotes. We have estimates, so.
Okay.
There's a long discussion on which direction you guys wanna go on that before we go get quotes for all these different...
So again, let's just, estimates, quotes, you know...
Let's have the discussion of what you guys wanna do out there before we...
They're estimates. We call people and they give us an estimate based off the best...
But before we get an estimate for doing A, we should have a discussion if you're gonna do A, B, C, B and C, whatever.
We've been asking for a simple quote. That's why we approved a Phase One environmental to tear the building down and ask for quotes to tear it down. We've been talking about this for over a year. You're looking at me like a deer in a headlights, Scott. This is why we did the Phase One environmental.
We already gave you quotes over a year ago of tearing it all down. You guys had that already. I gave you the quote for like, we did an Excel spreadsheet, we gave you a quote for tearing it down, and then we gave you all that line item Excel spreadsheet. That was already provided, like over a year ago.
We, I have, I don't have any of that stuff.
We can resend it to you.
Again, yeah, I can resend it. It's just an Excel spreadsheet with it and it gives you the breakdown of everything. Then you guys saw it and then Alderman Kabaki said, could you do as well, last time around this time, could you do a Phase One and then hazardous material move forward? So we moved forward with the Phase One. We didn't need a Phase Two and we did new material.
Everybody, timeout. This is not on the agenda today.
Well, it's a capital item.
Well, if you guys wanna talk about it, but the PD is not...
It's a capital item, you can talk about it, but it's not.
It's a budget item.
But regardless, what she asked for, we did provide, but however, before we, however, before we go forward and do any formal like RFPs or anything on that, let's find out what you guys want to do as a group.
Okay.
Okay? And we already had that planned on bringing that forward to you.
So I wasn't asking for any final RFPs, and I think the quote that you're talking about is from some excavating grading place from like years ago, a very old quote.
No, the one that I had, that I provided to you was pricing for 2025.
And where was that from?
I believe it was New Berlin Grading. I can check, but that's what it was. Now, again, that was all variance. The quote was variable based off of the Phase One, Phase Twos and the hazardous materials. Once we got those, and now we can stick them in the, do the RFP for the bid documents, and it really showed nothing really significant out there, you're probably going to get a better quote now that you have those documents.
Okay.
Okay? Remember the reports? We all, I provided those Phase One reports to everyone. You came in and you said, could you print it out for me? And I said, no.
Right, but we never had a discussion on it. We never had a discussion on the Phase One...
All right, where are we going with this?
I don't, I don't...
All right, enough, Scott.
Define, if you do or not, I just...
Yeah, it's enough, Scott. We're fine.
Okay.
Okay, you're gonna send that Excel sheet out to everybody again?
We'll resend it.
Yeah, resend it, please.
I can resend it again. Not a problem.
All right. Anything else on Town Hall? All right. Thank you. Do you know what page you're starting on?
Seven. Better? There we go. Yes. Page seven. Hopefully you guys got a chance to read my memo that was in the back of the packet that kind of explains what I'm asking for, for the IT department this year. This year, we kind of had a perfect storm going on. We needed some equipment replaced, which previous parts of that has been in the budget for the last couple of years, earmarked. However, in 2023, Broadcom, which is a software vendor that bought our VMware. I know you guys don't know what VMware is, so let me try and explain it. VMware is a program that runs all our servers in one nice, neat little package. We can do a lot of cool things with it. Broadcom bought this company in 2023 and they have made no hesitation about raising prices. They wanna kind of price out the little guy. To give you an example, the current version we're on is like a standard version because we're not very big. Last year, we paid $5,300 annual service for that fee. Next year, projected cost is going to go up to $11,760, which is about 118% increase. There's no end in sight with this company. So with that being done and the other equipment that I need, I'm asking if we can get kind of all in one unit and all at one time, and let me explain why. I'm asking for switches, which is the backbone of the network. For those of you who don't know, every device in here plugs into a port, which plugs into a switch, which does things for the network to give you access to items. The second thing is hosts and/or servers. Servers obviously run all of our 46 servers we have in the city and the hosts, they're just called hosts instead of servers because they're all combined into one. And then the SAN storage is where all the data is stored. So you've got a server's equipment separate than the SAN. The other problem we have going on this year is back in 2021... is back in 2023, I'm sorry, 2024, um, I did a DR site at the school district for disaster recovery. So what we did is we took our old equipment there. We moved it over to the school district for shared resources and I asked for licensing costs for that. As time is marching on and we're pushing more and more data, that backup is getting very, very slow. That equipment is looking at 13 years old currently. So between the equipment at, uh, the disaster recovery site and this VMware price increase that I, I can't control, I'm asking if we can possibly get enough money so I can do a new setup. And what that new setup would incur is I would take the existing stuff we have here at City Hall and I would put it at the disaster recovery site and I would take the old stuff out. In order to do that, I'm gonna need the same kind of gear here to set up two environments so I can move from one type of software to the other type of software and then we wipe this and we move it. Does that make sense? Yes, no?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Barb?
Yes.
How mu, how many vendors are there that compete with this current company?
There is a few. There's Proxmox and Hyper-V. Um, Proxmox is kind of an open so, source software and Hyper-V is a Microsoft project, a product which we already kind of pay for in our licensing. So it kind of makes sense that we just move to the Hyper-V since we're already kind of paying for it with, you know, in a degree. It wouldn't be a much cost increase at all.
So, so every city is going through this evidently, right? I mean, IT departments, we, we, we...
More and more technologies being...
We don't like the IT departments anymore. Um, you, you know, cost sharing is, is what I'm thinking. I, I don't know what cities, cities are doing, but there's gotta be a, a, a platform that eventually the state or someone should get on that we can do. I mean, each city has to reproduce everything over and over again. Is that, are you gonna tell me security reasons or whatever? Um, safe, you know, I, 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 there's gotta be something starting, gotta be something going on with these companies that they can't keep jacking every single city like this.
So, so you're, you're correct. There, there's gotta be a way of doing some more collaboration than we're doing. The state's not necessarily an answer because every time I've seen the state do a statewide contract for some software, it turns into a nightmare. I mean, election software is a good example of that. Um, so that's probably not the answer. Straying off the subject a little bit, but because it's going into budget and we're talking about that, this, the league of municipalities right now is looking at doing something similar to what school districts do with CSAs they're called. Um, but that's what school districts call them. They call them something else on a municipal level, but essentially the state would be broken into regions and for things that you don't, that's not like your main bread and butter, but like smaller things that you can cooperatively buy that makes sense, that these entities would be a, a place that like everyone in southeastern Wisconsin could source something through. They could be buying contracts and things like that. So that, they, literally the, um, survey just came out yesterday from the league asking about it. Um, so they're gathering input, but the goal is to have something like that implemented in the next 12 months.
What, what I'm thinking is, is McDonald's, you know, um, Chase Bank, you're talking about security, right? Financial institutions. Um, they have branches everywhere and they're not buying individual things. They might buy licenses, but they're not, they have, they have a main server somewhere.
Correct.
And, and you know, you talk about regions, you know, take three counties and get a, a server somewhere and start, I mean, we can't keep giving $460,000 out every six years just for this alone. And, and then you're gonna come back next year and you're gonna say, well, you know, because we did this with it. Now I need 120,000 to add that on to this that I just did. And by the way, that 120 is only a piece of my 490,000 I need for that. So there, there's, there's gotta be a way that the municipalities have got to get together to kind of break some of this. I mean, we're talking millions and millions and millions. I mean, we're a small community compared to a Milwaukee or Madison or something, right?
Yeah. No, it's, it's a, it's, it's a dilemma that we all deal with. Um, this particular thing she's talking about is more to do with the backbone of our actual infrastructure of the building. So look at it more like electrical, running wires than it is the data. Yes, there's a data component of this, but this, this, this particular thing is the infrastructure, no matter where, if you were running all these servers off the cloud or you're doing it here, you still need this infrastructure in the building here. So that...
At this point, yeah.
Yeah, right. Well, you know, wired is the best way right now. So Alderman Decker? Oh, you don't have a question? Okay, you looked like you did.
Just a thought. Thanks.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you, Rob. And it's, it's that trade-off of, and I'm not sure if we're ahead financially on any of it. You know, you look at where we were 25, 30 years ago as a municipality, we had a lot more employees and were able to operate with less because of technology. But the technology, at least when you bought software years ago, you owned it. Now you can't even buy software, you lease it.
Yeah, it's outdated.
It's a subscription base. Everything is going to subscription base and that's where they jack up the cost. And to your point, Alderman, this should last us the next good seven to 10 years at the DR site and here.
You're telling that to us today.
Fair enough.
Any other questions? Any strong objections? All right, next?
Um, that's all I have for 2026. I don't know if you want me to go through the rest for 2027 and beyond.
Is anyone having questions on any of the upcoming stuff she has?
Uh, running through.
Six.
We'll just take a quick look.
Or I'm sorry, s, eight.
Up to 13.
Yeah, up to 13.
This is the big bio that she's got for the next few years.
Yes. So we've got copiers. We've got some firewall replacements in a couple of years. We've got some UPS replacements. UPS is the uninterrupted power supply that runs the two data centers at the PD and City Hall. Um, the one is about 15, 16 years old because we moved that from the old PD to save costs. And the other one is for City Hall here. So what I'm actually looking at doing is taking one from City Hall and possibly moving it to the PD to get some more life out of it and just replacing one. Um, but they haven't gotten back to me if that's a doable thing yet or not. Security audit pen testing, that obviously has to happen every couple of years for compliance reasons. And then the scien, siren software, that's for the tornado sirens only.
Fine. I think, I just wanted to just take a quick glance. So we're gonna hold you to $200,000 next year.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sam or Chief? Who wants to call even or odd? One of you?
Um...
No, I'm just, you gotta call even or odd and then I'll...
Can...
All right. They're not going today? Okay.
Can I make a quick request?
Nope. All right. Chief, you're up.
Can I make a quick request?
Sure.
Like an eight-minute break?
We'll take an eight-minute break.
Thanks.
Continuing on. Chief?
Uh, good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time this evening. I would just like to point out I plan on going in priority order. Um, so that way you just have an understanding of like where the priorities are with the Meskego Police Department. I would like to give Jenny, our finance director, just to shout out specifically, this year she did add in all the memos and the quotes and the drafts from the individuals that did put in these requests. Sometimes it's not from me. Yes, it's from me, but it's some of my staff members that do the legwork that put in the, you know, get the quotes or the bids or where we're coming from when it comes to this. Uh, sometimes it's just hard to, to see on a, just a spreadsheet and you only get a few words on it. So Jenny, thank you. Uh, with that, I'm gonna start with the, my first ask. Uh, basically, if you're not aware of it, Axon is the big fish when it comes to, uh, policing, when it comes to things that we are doing. We are in a one-vendor solution with Axon and Axon handles all of our body cameras, interview room solutions, Taser 10, which is an upgrade that we're looking to, uh, do for our officers, which is a less lethal option that they have available. They also handle all of our evidence.com. Uh, if you're aware of it, when I pitched this back in 2022, we transitioned from things called, if you remember, we used to have things called discs and CDs. Uh, we no longer do that anymore thankfully and it's all on a digital and it's stored in the cloud. But like Barb will tell you and kind of what Alderman Wolf is talking about too, the cloud is expensive and we have to pay for it to make sure that we have secure channels. Here's what I'll tell you, Axon is the big vendor when it comes to body cameras and everything else. What we wanted to do is we had four different invoices that are in there. If you've actually paged through that invoice in there, it's confusing as all get out. Uh, which is why four of them all together stacked on top of each other is not ideal. What I want to do is I want to renegotiate and I want to sign a contract pushing this out one decade and taking care of the Meskego Police Department for the next decade, which includes, uh, the body cameras, the squad cameras, which I didn't mention before, uh, and they're naturally on a cyclical upgrade cycle. So when the technology comes due, we are getting new cameras as part of this agreement and it locks us in in that price for the next decade. And it's an economy of scale. And if you read the first page of the invoice, the savings, I can just tell you that we have gone back and forth, round and round with Axon and trying to make sure that we maximize the savings for the taxpayers of Meskego. So that's number one. Any questions on Axon?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I know you said you want to get a 10-year contract. Is that standard or is it usually like a two, five?
The two options that are available are a five and 10. Uh, obviously if you go out further, that's where you're gonna get the economy of scale. And I thankfully, I don't know if I want to be here when you renegotiate and see how much that's going to be, but body cameras are something, here's what it will come back to, and I've said this before. It's actually saved us a lot of money in the long run in terms of making sure that our officers are out there doing what they're supposed to be doing 99.9% of the time. I have handled in my almost five years as chief now, every single citizen complaint we've been able to, uh, negate based upon the use of our either squad cameras or body cameras. So if you want to talk about liability in today's policing, this is what we need.
They're also great in court. Defendant says, I didn't do that. And they're like, well, what about, what's his video?
So, so this is for a certain amount of, say, cameras?
This is to outfit the Meskego Police Department, uh, for the next 10 years. And you can see that it's a 234-100, but it's every year for the 10 years. But then auto renew, uh, it's called a refresh. So we're due our first reset, refresh next year, the cameras, because they, they wear out, they wear down and technology increases. This, it's all built into the price. And I say, oh, the, the magical price. Axon is the big vendor. They're, they're the big fish.
But I'm just saying, this is for a certain amount of them though. I mean...
Correct.
So if we add three more police officers, we're gonna add, add three more. I'm just using cameras as an example. So this price will go up then, right?
There is a possibility if we increase the number of people that, like, we'd have to add one or two. We, we built in a slight buffer to make sure...
Or your one gets broken and what do you have?
One gets broken and we have to have the immediate replacement. So that we do have a buffer currently, um, that's in there because you don't want to have it at the bare minimum because things happen.
And it, this is also, um, is it like a warranty too that we can trade these in and out with them or is that, I mean, how does that work?
Yes. The, it's Axon's, it's basically the one-vendor solution that I talked about. When they break, we send them back, we get a new one, uh, and we can continue to go forward because we need to have those officers having those cameras all the time.
Any other questions?
Questions on Axon? All right. Next, I'm gonna go to page 17. Dispatch consoles. I've mentioned these before. What I'm asking for is the earmarked money on this because our dispatch consoles are currently operating on Barbell Laugh, but it's Windows 7. Uh, and we had a failure this last year on one of our consoles. We have double, uh, we have two consoles in case one goes down. One of them did go down, but it's on such an old platform system that we had to re-image and go back to, to Windows 7 and open up that box, uh, just to make sure that it works. So this is earmarked money to make sure that we have money available if we have a failure or need to move forward with dispatch console.
Just earmarking it, not?
Correct. I have, according to policy, I'd have to come back to you and like before I made a decision on something, I have to get approval from council.
Next page.
Page 22. This is the flock camera system. Currently, we operate seven flock cameras throughout the city of Meskego. This is something that we brought up last year. Uh, we're looking to increase that number by two. I can tell you that we've had community partnerships in the past with, uh, the Citizens Academy Alumni Association has purchased one for a year and then also Fleet Farm has helped us out with a donation as well. Uh, we place these in geographic locations and I can tell you the success, uh, stories have been pretty phenomenal in what we've used flock for, uh, within the city of Meskego.
How, how many do you have right now, you said?
We have seven and it's an annual cost. You know, we cover the annual, individual cost, but the, it's $3,000 per camera per year. And so I'm looking to increase that by two. And basically, we are taking a strategic approach to the roadways that we have in Meskego to make sure that we're using it as an investigative tool.
So last year we were paying 6,000 less than what's on there right now?
Correct.
Because I noticed in 2027, you're gonna ask for another two?
Actually, the, the 2027 should probably move to 2026.
So it's 27,000, not 21,000?
Correct. We're currently at seven, which is seven times three. I'm looking to increase it by two for 2026. I'll touch base with Jenny on that.
Thank you.
Correct. This technology has paid dividends for us. Um, astronomical, we had a domestic violence suspect, I believe last week, uh, that we were able to ping the plate and the, the domestic violence suspect left the city. We were able to put that in what's called a hot read and our dispatchers are able to pick up it past the specific camera coming back into Meskego. We were able to make the arrest, um, relatively quickly based upon that technology.
Chief, uh, what, what's the figure for 20, 26 is 27K?
It'd be 27 going forward.
27 going forward. It's 3,000 per year per camera.
Oh, you're not looking to add anymore?
Well, this year we'd be adding. It should be twen, the number in there at 21,000 should have been 27,000. And then, so that's the increases going from 26.
I thought you were looking to add two more again. Okay.
No.
Is this the same kind of technology as like the iPass, like reading the license plate? I'm just curious, like...
It's not the same technology. If you can look at your iPass, you put a sticker or the, your module in your car. This is something that you can see all throughout southeast Wisconsin of cameras that are individually set up, both coming and going. And they pick up license plates. They also pick up colors of cars, types of cars, bumper stickers on cars. And obviously, it is something that we were kind of late to the game to because we had our concerns over privacy issues to make sure that it's in there. I will tell you that we have a, a strong policy when it comes to any kind of misuse of this program, specifically in the Meskego will be dealt with swiftly. And we've had zero violations of policy to date, uh, utilizing this technology in our police department.
Are you planning to stay at night in cameras for the reasonably near term?
Reasonably near term. I want to look at that and then I'll reevaluate on how we do going forward. I don't know if we're gonna have to increase. The beauty about Meskego, if you pay attention, there's, there's not a whole lot of roads coming and going. We're hitting those high traffic areas to make sure that we are encompassing, let's just say 80% of the inbound or outbound traffic that occurs in Meskego.
Next.
Page 22, vests. These are, uh, it's all encompassing of the vest and it's the, the body camera. Say that again?
Page 21.
Oh, 21, one page prior. Apologies. This is vest. If you're not aware of it, we have new officers come in. We have people go. The vests expire after five years. Uh, and that encompasses both our skit vests, I've been asking for these every year, or the vests that you can see that I'm wearing underneath here. And they expire after five years. And for liability purposes, you want to make sure that you're paying for the vest. And we do get grants and reimbursements, uh, that come from our grant wear, vest wear. Page 18. But it's what's called the great, gray key cell phone technology as well as a Faraday box. Uh, if you're aware of how that works, it's basically your phone, it can connect to the internet and a, a variety of different places. But when we seize it as an evidentiary value, we want to place it in a box that it can't get any kind of radio transmission, remote set off, remote delete. And we need that to make sure that we're hanging on to that in the Meskego Police Department for evidence custody... for evidence custody purposes. And then Gray Key is the unlocking technology because we've changed from the computer forensic lab in the county so that we have the internal ability to download a phone in case, either through consent or through a warrant at the Meskego Police Department. And Gray Key specifically is what we're asking for is this fee to help with that. And then it also gives me unlock capabilities. We get a certain number of unlocks every single year based upon this dollar amount. And the unlock, if you're not familiar with it, can bypass your security features on your phone in certain criteria to make sure that we can get into it if it's a search warrant.
Alderman and Wolf, this would be something that would be perfect for a collaboration that I'll have because it's not something that every department needs. I mean, they all need access to it, but it's not like you have to have it like that. So the box to lock it in so it can't get the radio transmission, yeah, but the software to crack the code would be something that would fall into that.
Page 19 is drones. We did get a quote for, this is basically an interior drone. And if you can understand, again, I'm going through priority, top to bottom. Drones is something that we have, has been a force multiplier for us. If you're not aware of it, we had a fatality this last weekend on Big Meskego Lake. As part of that fatality that occurred on Big Meskego Lake, we had some awesome dispatchers that utilized rapid SOS technology. They were able to figure out where the cell phone call was made on Little, or Big Meskego Lake. And then they were able to send the drone up to direct test corners fire to where exactly that went. But now I'm talking specifically interior drones with this. We have a great drone program and I mentioned Sergeant Klink before. But the next step in this is sending in miniaturized drones. If you have that situation where you have a barricaded subject in a particular house, you're going to send the drone in to take a look first prior to sending a human into the room.
Question?
Yes.
These interior drones, does the SCIT, the Suburban Critical Incident Team have interior drones?
They do.
Are we, do we have access to use those drones if we needed?
We have access if the SCIT personnel are available to use them and then it's also the call out.
Do we have any indoor drone trained officers?
Sergeant Klink is the trainer of that, so yes, we do. And so if he's on duty, he has the ability to do that and utilize that through our partnership with Suburban Critical Incident Team. But to answer your question, this is a want, not a need.
Thank you.
If you're making, that's where I'm going. And then lastly, SCIT rifles?
Part of that, you have replacement batteries on there as well. Are they expensive or just mainly the drone price?
This is mostly the drone price.
It's mostly the drone on this.
Batteries might be like 200 bucks or so.
So when you said that you have an officer who's trained or is the trainer on that, are you heading in the direction that you're going to train people on that or?
Yes. So more than just the suburban, you have to be a member of the Suburban Critical Incident Team and then a member of the Technology Resource Group that can utilize those drones. Or we have to do a mutual aid call to another agency to have them come down and use those specific drones and features. I'm trying to make sure that we have more drone operators for our internal stuff here when we have those critical incidents because I don't want to wait the time it could take to bring something down and look at that. But it is, it is a want, not a need on this one.
Just for conversation, what is the life expectancy if you just use it? And how do you ever use, I mean, what is the life on a drone without any damages or anything to it? You have any idea?
I don't, but here's what I will tell you about drones and you guys will appreciate this. We actually crashed our first drone and it was expensive. But the insurance company came back and gave us a payout for the drone. We utilized the money from the payout and we got a better drone and more equipment. Because if you picture, it's like a big screen TV. The prices just seem to, like drones, technology is out there all over the place and the cost is actually going down over time. So if that makes sense, we crashed our first drone that we did. We got an insurance payout and then we ended up getting more, which is kind of crazy, which makes it sound like if I would have known that, we'd crash it every three years. All right, you're laughing.
That would be insurance fraud. To answer your question, I'm a licensed drone pilot. I've got a number of drones. I've, the oldest one I have is 10 years old. It does everything it did the day I bought it. The difference between that one and the one I bought last year is it's got more bells and whistles, better cameras, all that. But the one I have from 10 years ago still does everything it did the day I pulled it out of box. So there's not really a life expectancy. I'm sure at some point the motor could burn out, but it hasn't in 10 years and I probably used that one the most initially. It's more of, okay, this new one does, like looks through a wall and the one we have now has to fly around it, you know? So it could be something like that.
So don't ask for another officer, you have a drone especially.
Moving on, page 20 is my last request for 2026. And that is replacement of our SCIT rifles. I've mentioned the term Suburban Critical Incident Team. These are specialized rifles for that team. They do put a lot of rounds through them. We did purchase them in 2013. So this is something that we'd be looking to replace for those special operators.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
For the 2013 rifles, is it getting harder to find more replacement parts to repair the rifles and keep them operating?
We can probably keep them operating. The issue is, obviously with those specialty weapons, we'd like to get them, the latest and greatest, to be quite honest with you. Some of the things too, with the older rifles, they're called a short barrel and we're looking to go a little bit different to make sure that we don't blow someone's ears out because they're extremely loud. And we've added some, through some great instructors, have added some silencers and some other things, but we'd be looking to replace these in that capacity. But they can be transitioned into our patrol squads later. So it's not something that we're just going to throw away the rifle.
Thank you.
How many rifles do we have currently?
I would have to check and give you a number on. We have several, but as far as-
So we're buying these every so many years?
Correct.
In a rotation? Because I don't see anything past this, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. Alderman, I'd have to get you the exact number of the numbers.
About five to seven, so. Okay, and we're replacing, how many with this, in this year, do you know? Because it says replacing rifle and then on top it says rifles.
It's multiple. It's not a $21,000 rifle.
It is in the back of the-
That's how many you have or how many you're replacing?
Well, we're replacing what we have.
Okay, got it.
It's a one for one replacement.
You're good, chief, you're good. Thanks.
I believe the quote's in the back of the information you have too.
Before 30, hey, we start putting that in the lines there.
That completes 2026. If I'm going to comment on anything going forward, we have moved things around on purpose and for 2027 beyond, just to, again, earmark some things so that it doesn't come as a surprise for you in the future. You heard Ryan talk specifically up here and Alderman Schrader's very keenly aware of our radio kind of work group that we have specifically with the county. Our handheld radios are going to need to be replaced sometime in the near future. It was something that was in for 2026, but we moved it to 2027. We just want to make sure that we're picking the right platform and that it's, you know, basically congruent with what the rest of the county is doing and so that we have the better communication amongst the county. That's probably one of our bigger purchases that we're looking at for 2027-ish, depending on how the county does, right, Alderman Schrader?
Yep.
Any other questions for you, chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the, going over the capital budget with the exception of the old police station, which we will be bringing back at a future. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We adjourned at 8:20. Thanks, everyone.